Given themselves in service. I know our school family thinks particularly of Mr. Brian Price and his unexpected in recent passing. And then, in a greater sense, we as Americans and human beings, we want to be mindful of those folks whose lives were sacrificed this day twenty-two years ago. So would you join me in silence? Thank you so much. In light of our remembrance of that day so long ago now, I would like to ask Mr. Oliver and our NJROTC cadets to present the colors. And I think they have a special remembrance as well.
Yes, sir.
Sir?
Thank you. Board members, if you would, please return to your seats. The cadets are going to stay at present during the presentation, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance afterwards, please. Folks, you may be seated. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the NJROTC for being willing to be part of the tribute to nine eleven this evening. Chief Campbell, Captain Ross, student cadets, thank you so much. Y'all look great as always. Awesome. Thank you. Chief Campbell, thank you. Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grit, special guests, school leaders, thank you for being here this evening. I truly appreciate the honor to speak to you today on the subject of Patriot Day and nine eleven. Today is Patriot Day. We will never forget what happened on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Let us remember and honor every life that was taken too soon. May we also commemorate the brave first responders and military service members who united to take action and save lives. The September eleven attacks, commonly known as nine eleven, were four coordinated Islamist suicide terrorist attacks carried out by Al Qaeda against the United States on Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand and one. That morning, nineteen terrorists hijacked four commercial airliners scheduled to travel from the New England and Mid-Atlantic regions of the East Coast to California. This meant they had max fuel onboard. The hijackers crashed the first two planes into the twin towers of the World Trade Center in New York City, two of the world's five tallest buildings at that time, and aimed the next two flights toward targets in or near Washington, DC in an attack on the nation's capital. The third team succeeded in crashing into the Pentagon, the headquarters of the US Department of Defense in Arlington County, Virginia, while the fourth plane crashed in rural Pennsylvania following a passenger revolt. Heroes. First photo, please. American Airlines Flight eleven departed Logan International Airport in Boston at seven fifty-nine AM. At eight forty-six AM, it crashed into the North Tower of the World Trade Center, floors ninety-three to ninety-nine. There were eleven crew members onboard, seventy-five passengers. This flight had five hijackers onboard. Second photo, please. United Airlines Flight one seventy-five departed Logan in Boston at eight fourteen AM. At nine oh three AM, it crashed into the South Tower of the World Trade Center, floors seventy-seven to eighty-five. This flight had nine crew members and fifty-one passengers. There were also five hijackers onboard. Third photo, please. American Airlines Flight seventy-seven departed Washington Dulles at eight twenty AM and crashed at nine thirty-seven AM into the West Wall of the Pentagon. This flight had six crew members, fifty-three passengers. There were five hijackers onboard. Next photo, please. United Airlines ninety-three departed Newark International in New Jersey at eight forty-two AM, and at ten oh three AM, just twenty minutes away from DC, this flight crashed into a field in Stony Creek Township near Shanksville, Pennsylvania. There were heroes among those thirty-three passengers onboard that flight. There were also seven crew members. This flight had four hijackers onboard. In total, on September eleventh twenty twenty, or two thousand and one, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven civilians died. Three hundred and forty firefighters and seventy-two law enforcement officers were included in this number. The total number on the ground at the World Trade Center was two thousand six hundred and six. The total number killed at the Pentagon was one hundred and twenty-five on the ground. On September eleventh, as you, as we've stated, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven civilians lost their lives that day. Since then, six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine US military personnel have been killed in the global war on terror. These fine students are here to represent those folks that have served us in uniform and continue to serve us. Think about how many people have served our country over the years and how many lives were on this day and since then, how many lives have been disrupted? The lives of all the casualties that day, their family members, were all impacted forever. All the, all those casualties were someone's son or daughter, mother, father, brother, sister, grandchildren, aunts, uncles, cousins. How many lives were disrupted on this day? I can tell you my story, which is very, and I'll be very brief, but I'm one of many thousands of US Reserve military members who served during that time. In one story of, you know, one small person, I was mobilized three times following nine eleven. I was promoted to Lieutenant Colonel in November of two thousand and two and January of two thousand and three. I was mobilized for twelve months. In May of two thousand and eight, I was promoted to the rank of Colonel. In January of oh nine, I was mobilized again for nineteen months this time. At that point, I was the principal at Freedom High School for my second mobilization. I failed to state that my first mobilization came while I was serving as principal at Blowing Rock School. So a big part of that day was, we all remember where we were, what we were doing, what was going on that day back in two thousand and one. I was in a principal meeting in Watauga County. It was my first year as principal of Blowing Rock. It's my second year as principal. And Dr. Jones, the superintendent at the time, he, he spoke to me during the, while we were watching what was happening on TV, like most people were. He said, Brian, I think your life is about to change. And it did. As I stated, in two thousand and nine, I was mobilized a second time for nineteen months. When I came back from that mobilization, I ended up as a principal at High Brighton High School in Caldwell County. And in two thousand and twelve, I was mobilized again, this time for nine months. After that mobilization, a few months after return, this is when I came to McDowell County in September of two thousand and thirteen. Last week, I've marked my ten-year anniversary as a McDowell County Schools' family member, and I'm very proud that I've been here these past ten years. Let me tell you about a couple of other families, and this again is a very small example. While serving as a battalion commander in Red Bank, New Jersey, two thousand and four to two thousand and six, I had the responsibility to attend two funerals of Marines who were killed in Iraq. Lance Corporal Richard A. Perez, he was his family's only son. He was from Las Vegas, Nevada. His family had, he had two younger sisters. He was, he was nineteen. He wasn't married. And again, he was his family's only son. His family was devastated, as you might imagine. Later on that year, I attended the funeral of warrant officer Charles Wells in Montgomery, Alabama. The warrant officer Wells was a fine young man. He had been promoted from the rank of sergeant to warrant officer, which is a huge honor in the military. And warrant officer Wells left a wife and eleven-year-old daughter, parents, brothers, sisters. Those were two of the saddest days of my life. And it's just one example. So I want you to always think about all those folks that were impacted on that day. Next photo, please. This is a happy photo because this is what Ground Zero looks like now. And this is a tribute to everyone who was lost on that day. All the victims, all the heroes who rushed into the building, they didn't rush away from them, they rushed in. Firefighters, law enforcement officers, first responders, those are heroes. This tribute should always help us remember what happened on that day and the level of preparedness that we need to maintain to hopefully ensure that that never happens again. Next photo, please. What is a patriot? A patriot's calling is rooted in service fueled by sacrifice and driven by an unwavering love for country and fellow men. Take pride in your patriots. Celebrate them, give thanks for them, support them, they're around you. We have a student who's a hero right now. She's working in her internship, serving someone who's in need of emergent healthcare. That's a hero. Let us promise that we will never forget those who have been lost both on nine eleven, two thousand and one, and in the global war on terror since then. Thank you for your attention. Chief Campbell, please resume colors. All right, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and thank our ROTC unit. Campbell and our resident Colonel, Mr. Brian Oliver. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, I, I think we owe Mr. Oliver a standing ovation, not only for what he has done in the Marine Corps, but for what he's done in McDowell County School.
We'll continue on then with the meeting this evening. Next on the agenda is remarks by super, our superintendent, Dr. Grit. So, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. English, ladies and gentlemen of the board, folks out there. Mr. Oliver, thank you so much for leading us today. You had mentioned that story to me, as, as often we do, we share our stories about nine eleven. Mr. Oliver shared that story with me, and we were thinking about what needed to be done tonight. And I could not think of a better person to lead us. That was, that was excellent. And, and thank you for helping us remember, those are hard memories. Hard memories, I know this group, we all remember them vividly. And some of us may not understand it to, to the level that you do. So I appreciate you bringing that to us in our group tonight. Thank you. All right, moving right along, we, uh, want to, want to just let everybody know this year, we have kicked school off. We've had a great school year to start with. We're excited about that. We've got some positives for you early on here. Uh, one of the first things I want to recognize tonight is, uh, recognition in Newsweek Magazine for McDowell Early College. Uh, they, they have earned a national ranking in the top forty percent. Achieved the status of US News Best Forty High Schools. Best, best, best forty percent of high schools. It gained eligibility to display US News Trademark for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Best High School Award Badge Logo. This, this came in just a few days ago. It's one of those that I wanted to go ahead and let everyone know. We, we certainly might want to need to have those folks back and recognize them. wanna need to have those folks back and recognize them. Uh, but tonight, just to, just to let you know, that ranking tied for number one in the nation uh on one hundred percent graduation. That's outstanding. Uh, that ranking was also number fifty-eight in the state. Um, and there's many schools, more than two thousand in the state, uh for state assessment proficiency. So we're very proud of that work, and we just wanna recognize that tonight. Uh, also wanna recognize uh the beginning of school this year, we had a convocation. Uh, the folks at East Middle School did an outstanding job preparing the facility. Uh, for any of y'all who were there, the facility looked incredible. Uh, they, they, if you see them out and about, just give them a pat on the back, but overwhelmingly the staff uh shared positive feedback from, from that, uh from that. We actually did a survey, and uh, you know, when you look at those surveys and, and you see all green and, and blue, and then you just see one little sliver of, of, of inkling that, that something, somebody didn't like, and so you're talking about ninety-seven percent uh agreement. That's, that's impressive. So, and, and that's, that goes uh to this team as well, uh the executive team uh for putting that, that program together. Um, and then a lot of that was uh, you know, uh through a lot of hard work that, that started long before, before I came, so I was happy to, happy to be part of that. So, a couple of other things here, has anyone noticed the start of the school year has been kinda hot? It's been a little bit warm out there, so guys, our maintenance department, uh they, they have been on overdrive, working tirelessly to keep up with the AC units in schools. Um, and that's one of those things, uh, we, we do turn those systems off during the summer, and when we fire them back up, it takes a little bit to get them back up and going. Uh, but you know, that's one of those things, we do go through those every year, and they worked hard to make sure that we uh got the AC working. Also, the cafeteria staff, uh they struggled through some things too. Some of those freezers and, and coolers don't always like to work as well on ninety-five degree days, uh so they worked through some of those uh issues as well. As well as our bus garage, I've been battling with heat and working through uh, through the AC issues. I, I want to thank our staff working behind the scenes to help make it through what we hope will be lasting excessive heat. Uh, Sept- September the eleventh, you, you start to think about fall. I know uh my wife put out some fall things uh on the deck, it, it didn't quite look quite like what it should look just yet, wasn't cool enough, I think some of them were sweating still, the, the, the spooks that she had out there were sweating a little bit, but um, cause it's still hot out, but uh really just wanna thank our staff for their hard work there. We, we did have some issues that bubbled up because of the, the heat, and, and you know, part of that, the several, several folks had contacted our board about activity buses and, and the fleet arrangement at, at the bus garage with only a handful of buses at the high school. It's important to note that the board did in fact reach out to me about finding a solution to a few bubbling issues. We worked through this last week. I want to thank the board for your support for working with me to direct concerns to our principals. It's always best when they know the issues that need to be addressed, and to be honest with you, the quickest solution is through our principals. Uh, that we will always find those solutions at the school level, and that's exactly how we work through this issue. Uh, Ms. Bennett, Mr. Cash, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Thompson, I were able to sit down and work through some of those issues. I wanna briefly just uh explain to you where we stand with activity buses. So currently, we have eight activity buses with AC that are considered newer. Now, newer in the bus life is twenty fifteen and better. Now, newer in Mr. Oliver's Mustang out there, I, I think it's probably a little bit newer than that, so. Only about four years, little, little bit newer there. We have five additional older buses without AC and one older spare. And of those five, one of those is uh one of our uh lift buses as well. For those who've been around buses for a while, we still prefer the ease of the older buses. It's a lot easier to drive the older buses. Um, you know, but that, that's, that's comes with an issue too, because the driving gadgets and whatnot are definitely easier, but let's face it, they're still old. All of our schools share the locally funded activity buses, and the lion's share of the usage belongs to the high school with extracurriculars and activities and athletics. So we have agreed to leave two of the newer buses, twenty fifteen or newer, AC buses at the high school, and one of the older buses there this year. That may seem simple on the surface, but there's a little more to it. The high school will need to share these buses during the day. We hope it will be more convenient for our staff. The biggest issue here is checking in on buses. All right? Not checking them in at the bus garage where they can be easily accessed for issues, that's a concern. And I wanna give Ms. Bennett some credit there for coming up with a solution for that. We have a plan now with the high school staff of being able to check those buses in, as well as oversight from the bus garage to ensure that we're checking them in properly. So we feel like we have the processes in place to make sure that those buses are safe and that we're not um having a bus come in from a twelve o'clock late night activity with, with athletics and then having a kindergartner get on the bus in the morning. So we wanna make sure that we're taking care of those buses. To be honest, we could use another activity bus. We must monitor our pocketbooks and make sound decisions with local funding. I think that's hugely critically important. The end in this, man, I'm glad it's cooling off. I am glad it's cooling off. But, but speaking of budgets, folks, um, the state budget, um, uh, just before coming in here, we did look at the state budget, and we're still waiting on one. Um, we didn't hear anything today. I did hear that there's a good possibility tomorrow may be today. Um, we're hoping that something will come out this week. I, I do, I want to say that because a lot of times we may hear that we get a state budget, and we, we expect that there may be some raises for our staff. Um, and I know Ms. Ms. Rampy and her staff would be super excited to have a budget to be able to work from this year. Ho- however, it takes a little bit of time for us to process and get that payroll um into place. If we were to get a budget tomorrow, the likelihood of being able to get that in place by the payroll September, which is starts, started today, would be unlikely. Um, and I do wanna put that out there, it will take a little bit of time to make sure we get that in place, and that would become forthcoming in the October uh payroll. So let's hope that they can get that approved this week, which will give us a full month's run-up um to getting it right for our employees. Also, I wanna let you know that the testing data results are out for the school year. You can access those on NC DPI's website. Keep in mind, that's the raw data. That's the raw data. The school report cards are not expected to come out until October. Those are a little more self-explanatory. Right now, there's just a lot of numbers out there. I see Ms. Baker, it's a lot of numbers, isn't it, Ms. Baker? So, but we will have uh those school report cards coming out in October with a little more uh information there as well. Board, in our September meeting, we will be, in our September work session, I will be going through a, a good bit of that data in our strategic plan. I wanna let you know what we're, what we're gonna be doing tonight. We're gonna be here presentations tonight on the work behind the scenes to ensure that we are up to date on the Parents' Bill of Rights. I want to remind everyone that the Parents' Bill of Rights is not new to McDowell County or North Carolina. The district has been one hundred percent in compliance with our previous policies, and ten of the twelve updates to meet the law requirements are not new. We've worked diligently to keep the noise down in the classroom to, so teachers can teach while the administration works to ensure that we meet the latest provisions. I'm confident that we have always partnered with parents, will continue to partner with parents, and we will follow the law. We also have a presentation tonight on our ESTER funds. Uh, we'll be talking about ESTER two funds as well as ESTER three funds and the plan to move forward with, with those. I don't wanna steal Mr. Oliver's thunder about ESTER two. I want to thank the board for traveling to Asheville last week to the lead conference. Folks, this board had the best representation in, in western North Carolina. Um, not only were they the best represented, but this board was called upon to, as an example of what a board should look like. And I'm, and I'm proud to say that, that I'm part of that. It was, it was really nice and reassuring as a new superintendent to see your board sitting there uh supporting uh what, the work that we're doing here in McDowell County Schools. And uh, it's not an easy, it's not an easy job by any means for board members or for uh, for superintendent right now, particularly uh with some of the things we talked about, maybe not having a budget, could, could be made a little bit easier, but the, this board and their support, I, I just wanna say thank you to you guys, and I certainly appreciate you guys.
Well, uh, following along with talking about the uh training that the board attended last Thursday in Asheville, uh, your Board of Education was presented with a Silver Bell Award, which means that each person on this board has completed training to begin to comply with the provisions of the law that stipulate that over a period of two years, each member must have twelve hours of training, continuing education, however you would like to phrase it. And silver bell means that every single member on this board is way on down the path towards uh obtaining that certification. So uh, board, it's quite an accomplishment, and I don't know if, if y'all didn't see that. Uh, we could, maybe Ms. Smith take you down the frame and autograph it, and then, you know, hang it back up somewhere? Or we could make a dartboard out of it. But I'll uh, just so uh you folks know, uh, just because uh you get elected to the Board of Education, doesn't mean you just get to show up once a month. It's a, it really is a, a calling and a duty, and uh I want you to be reassured that this board takes it very seriously. Uh, in fact, of all the boards in western North Carolina that participated in the training, uh, McDowell had the largest number of board members present, which tells me that our folks here are, that we really care about making sure that we stay up to date, that we're able to make a difference in student success here and across this part of the state. So, uh, board, congratulations, and uh we'll continue uh working towards that goal. As a matter of fact, this is the second year in a row that, that we've been recognized. Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, enough bragging about us, let's brag on uh Ms. Mary Ann Basney, who is our Teacher of the Year this year, and uh Teacher of the Year usually keeps the board up to date on what all's going on out in the schools and across the district. So, Ms. Basney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'm really here to brag about some of our schools. So, this month, I'm gonna talk to you guys about Eastfield and Old Fort. Um, I did one more, sorry. So, Eastfield has been in school for a while now. They started mid-July, and their three-week break, correcting you if I'm wrong, is the eighteenth, right? You start, so you're almost there. So their break is super close. Um, Ms. Baker shared with me, um, they've had several great things in their building this uh, this school year. They're proud of their culture in Eastfield and their Eastfield community, and it's evident beyond wa- their walls. Their PTO board recently hosted a spirit night at Pelicans uh towards the end of August. They had over a hundred and fifty Eastfield family members come out for a snowball fellowship and fun, and they raised over two hundred and sixty-five dollars at the event. Ms. Baker said, um, we love our community and we are proud to be Eastfield strong. If you don't care to go one more, I've got some pictures from their event. Thank you, if you go one more, we have Old Fort, and Old Fort had a great turnout at their Meet the Teacher. They had tons of pictures that they were sent to me, and they had, students were all smiles on their first few weeks back at school, they're off to a wonderful start. If you'll go one more, I've got some photos of kids coming off the bus and sitting in class, they had a great day. Um, Dr. Gritt touched on this a little bit already, but the last thing I wanted to include was from our countywide convocation. It was fantastic. We had a parade of stars to recognize our beginning teachers that are in their first year of teaching, Teachers of the Year, staff with twenty-five years of teaching, staff with thirty years, thirty years plus, and all principals. Debbie Silver was a wonderful speaker, everyone I spoke to loved her. She was hilarious and inspiring, those are the two words I heard every time I spoke to someone. Sessions were led by fellow teachers in the district, and it was a great day. There's a few photos from our day. I had a pretty short uh presentation for you guys this time. Next month is North Cove and Marion Elementary. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, our student on the way? Almost here. Could we call for a short recess? To save having to revise our agenda again?
Next, we call for a recess.
Emergency Services Instructor, could you folks kinda be making your way to the podium? You can greet her as she comes in and bring uh, bring uh ma'am, ma'am, why don't you join them as well? Yeah, yeah, you! All right. So, the meeting will come back to order and uh
All right, well, good evening, and thank you for allowing this opportunity to recognize these students again. We're super proud of them as always. So, as you recall, we were here in April um to recognize these two ladies, well, and one other student, uh, for winning first place in the state. So, by winning first place in the state, this allowed them to go on to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. So during the week of June the nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, they were in Atlanta, Georgia, and um comp- competed against, I mean, twenty-one other high schools across the nation. And uh, we are very proud to say that they scored nine hundred and seventy-eight points out of a possible one thousand, which was just shy of one point, one-fourth of a point from the first place win. So this is a tremendous achievement for these students, and we could not be prouder of them. So, I will recognize them at this time, so Ms. Emma O'Neill. And Emma is a senior this year at McDowell High School. And our second winner is Ms. Peyton T., and she is graduated and is working with McDowell EMS. As you know, she was on a call just now, I'm a student, so very proud. And then their teacher, of course, is Mr. Barry Mitty.
The only thing, the only thing I'd like to say is to the board, thank you for your financial support for these kids to be able, these students to be able to go to Atlanta. The only thing, the only thing I'd like to say is to the board, thank you for your financial support for these kids to be able, these students to be able to go to Atlanta. Um, you sacrificed a lot. The families sacrificed a lot. They, they gave up a week's worth of salary to be able to go. We were able to raise money, uh, to help offset that. But it's a privilege to be able to teach, uh, the best, the best students in McDowell County, the state of North Carolina and the entire eastern part of the United States. They represented you well, um, very professional while they were there. Um, a- and it just makes me proud to be, you know, I, I cried a little bit, you know, I said, can't you do any better than second place? But, but let me tell you, to score nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight points out of a possible thousand points, twenty-two points from being perfect. And that says a lot about them, their character, their integrity and, uh, just who they are as a person, like, just like, uh, Peyton's just coming off of a call. Um, I mean, she graduated in June and she's already working EMS. So that is our goal. We're, I think we're close to about sixty having in careers since I've been at McDowell High School ten years ago. So that's a great accomplishment. So when they say nothing's happening good at McDowell, there sure is right here is two of the best.
Can we ask the girls just a couple of quick questions? Uh, can your girls just tell us a little bit, like, what, what happened at the competition? What did you have to do at the competition? You might wanna go to the microphone for the...
So our first day of competition. Oh, sorry, I'm little. Um, so the actual big competition day, we had, we either got a trauma scenario or a medical scenario. And our number was even or odd. So we ended up with the trauma scenario. So we had a gunshot victim. So a gunshot wound. Um, we also had to run through scenarios of like drug medications and minocriine and like an epinephrine auto-injector and doing like OPAs, which are OPAs and NPAs, which are devices to help a patient breathe, help us ventilate a patient. We had a test that we had to take.
It was seventy-five questions, which I just wanna point out that we had the most questions out of all the other, like, groups that were there. There were law and justice, fire, like CSI, and I was looking around and we had seventy-five and everybody else was like, we have thirty. And I'm like, oh.
We were there for a whole week and we just had different things to do out of the week. It was, it was fun.
Atlanta is very different from McDowell County. I will say that.
You think?
It was a lot of walking.
You could put up with him for a week straight.
That was the most challenging part of it all.
And eating Chick-fil-A every single day.
Every... And, and that's what I was gonna ask you, like, what was the most challenging part of the competition? Like, what was the part that, you know, really pushed you to, 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 to excel?
Seeing how many other people were there to come, like, compete against us, that was nerve-wracking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and knowing that they were all first in their states too and seeing how much differently, like, we do stuff just in McDowell County alone compared to other counties in our state compared to what they are gonna do in theirs. And honestly, I don't have very good self-esteem, so I was like, we're not even in a place. And so just thinking, like, having a mindset of, we can still do this even though
Yes.
there's so many other students there that are good, obviously enough to make it to a national competition. It was just having a mindset of we can do it.
Well, I, I really do appreciate the time and energy that you put into that competition. I know it's time away from your family, lots of practice and hard work, but thank you for representing McDowell so well. We are so proud of you. Thank you so much.
I came from a county, I didn't move to McDowell County and start going to McDowell County schools until my eleventh grade year. And I came from a high school in a county that didn't have these kind of programs. We had like nursing classes and stuff like that, but we didn't have a big humongous CTE program like we did, like we do it here. So it was a great move for me. I was nervous, of course, at first, but when I came and saw this program and all the opportunities that were here in McDowell, it made it so much easier. So...
And I wanna point out that this is the part, like, in school and stuff, a year-long class, that was the first time that me and Peyton had ever worked together, ever. Uh, we had never in class, like, with doing scenarios in class at state, like, this was the first time that we had ever worked together. And for us to never have had to this type of communication and go out and do what we did is very surprising and I'm very proud of us both for doing that.
So you were well-prepared. You were well-prepared. Congratulations.
Say thank you.
I look forward to, uh, I look forward to seeing people show up to help me one day with like medals on. You guys might be a team out there someday. That's awesome. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Alright. Ladies, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, our next item this evening is correspondence and Ms. Smith, uh, just, uh, handed me the correspondence we have. This is from, uh, Mr. Suddles and Brown family. It says, "Dear McDowell County Schools family, thank you so much for the flower and the visits we received at my grandmother's funeral. Death is never easy, but you all made it so much easier to handle. I love you all. Donnie and Brown family." So, uh, Mr. Suddles, thank you for the kind remarks. No other correspondence, Ms. Smith?
No.
Okay. We'll move along then to item ten, which is Request to Address the Board slash Public Comment. Are there any folks who desire? Okay. So we'll move along to item eleven, Unfinished Business. The ESER and Facilities Updating. Dr. Grit, I'll let you, uh, point out whoever's gonna be taking the lead first.
Absolutely. Mr. Oliver's gonna take the lead for us first. I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Hamby's gonna take the lead for us first. Mr. Oliver's gonna... She's gonna tee it up and he's gonna drive it down the middle. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing us to share with you this afternoon. Uh, you know you're aging when you have to wear contacts and readers and so I'm to that point in my life. Uh, so, um, so Chairman English, uh, Ms. Muma, members of the board, thank you once again. Uh, we are looking forward to shout, sharing with you about our ESER, uh, funds. Our first fund is ESER two. Uh, as you can imagine, our ESER one funds, uh...
Just, just very quickly, for the public's information, ESER stands for...
Our Elementary Secondary Emergency Relief Funds. That's right, Elementary Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund.
And this is the COVID money.
That is the COVID money, yes, sir.
That was sent to the district to help make improvements related to the challenges of COVID.
Yes, sir.
And you folks are gonna tell us...
Where we are.
Where we are and what we've been doing and what we hope to accomplish.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much. So, yes, so we have our ESER one funds. Those were, uh, funds were expended, uh, a little over a year ago and that brought us up to our ESER two funds. And those funds have to be, uh, expended by September thirtieth of this year. So we started out the year out of the money that we had left, out of about five-point-eight million out of ESER two. We started this year with a carryover amount of about two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars, so a small amount of money. At this time, it is my, uh, honor and privilege and excitement to say congratulations to our team. We have, uh, expended those funds, uh, as planned. And, uh, and so we're, we're super excited about that. Uh, Ms. Rampy and others will tell you that we have until December to actually, uh, pay our, our final bills for that. But, uh, our plan is, um, has been successfully completed. With a little bit of carryover money that we had left over for this year, we were able to do a small computer refresh for our early, um, aged kiddos. Uh, we were able to continue to make improvements to some of our facilities in the way of carpet removal, uh, to improve air quality, uh, and also some existing site improvements. And, uh, so Mr. Trinks and his team have been working very hard in order to accomplish these tasks with the amount of money that we had, uh, carried over. So that leads me in to our largest, uh, funds and that was ESER three. This is our final pot of emergency relief money uh, that we were allocated. We carried over into this year about six-point-seven million dollars and, uh, our plan has been submitted to the state for these funds and it has been approved. So, uh, we have, uh, been able, uh, each one of our directors, uh, has a small pot of money that they have been working based upon your wishes and the things that you asked us for in the beginning and along with our stakeholders. Um, so we currently have been able to, we have, uh, social workers, we have a school counselor, we have, uh, some, uh, nurses in these funds. We also have a twenty percent mandate by the, uh, fed- federal government on learning loss and so we're working towards that. We also have money set aside for our computer refresh for this year. Um, we also, out of this purcha- or out of this, uh, these funds, we were able to purchase an activity bus, which allowed us to be able to spread our students out, uh, during the height of COVID when transporting to and from places. Um, and then we also, um, have our McDowell Virtual Academy as well. And so these funds will be continuing to support those things. We also have funds allocated for facility updates. Uh, and those facility updates includes, and, and Mr. Oliver will share with you about these, but includes our facility planning and improvements to some of, to one of our facilities, also HVAC and also to our dish sanitation system, um, in several of our locations. Are there any questions for me before I turn it over to Mr. Oliver about our maintenance? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby. And I just wanna say, um, Ms. Hamby has been managing all of these federal funds for the last two years and just started year three and she has done an incredible job in managing these funds for the district. And I know that, uh, no one's happier about that than Ms. Rampy. Ms. Hamby, thank you for doing a great job with the ESER funds. So, um, Ms. Hamby mentioned, um, some of the items that we're looking at for the facilities portion of the funds. And just a reminder that any, uh, facilities funds that come from ESER, it has to be related to the improvement or enhancement of student health. So with that in mind, that's how we come up with, um, the projects that we would like to do that, that are then presented to the board and to the state for approval of how we plan to use those federal funds. So within, uh, the remaining ESER three funds, the two big projects that we're looking at first, and these are currently, um, in the hands of our electrical engineer folks with Holland and Hammerick, uh, we are allowed to work with an electrical, with a architecture or an engineering firm that we currently have a relationship with in these plans. And the first, these two really big-ticket items, one is the cafeteria upgrade at McDowell High School, which will take the serving line and move it out of the very compacted terrible situation kitchen. That kitchen was built in seventy-one, seventy-two. So, um, not a good situation for a school that has grown like our school has. So this is a, a huge upgrade. It includes, um, new serving lines which will move out. Um, it includes an update in the kitchen, which includes tile, new equipment, new electrical to support that equipment. Um, a very big undertaking there with that part of the project. It also includes, um, plumbing upgrades because, uh, the new equipment and new space will require a more advanced and robust plumbing system to support that. That project, right now, pretty confident that the, the cost for this project is gonna be somewhere between seven-hundred and seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The next big-ticket project that will be used out of ESER three and it's also at the high school, this is something that we obviously need. But this will include, uh, HVAC ma- mainly for air conditioning in our gym and eight of our CTE classrooms that do not have AC. So you can tell by what we're talking about, that's gonna be a lot of money. This project, best case, is gonna come in around five-hundred thousand, worst case, eight-hundred thousand. So we're still in the, the engineering planning phase of this project and, we should have some better information in the next few weeks. They do plan to have these, both of these projects ready to go to bid by early November. So if these projects come in at the amounts that are currently expected, that will expand anywhere from one-point-two to one-point-five million of the two-point-three-two-five million that is set aside based on the approved plan for facilities and maintenance. So the other projects that would be used to expand the rest of the funds, uh, we definitely, we have some cooling tower needs at several schools. The schools that would receive new cooling towers and these are big, big project cooling towers. These would be at McDowell High School, North Cove and West Marion. So this would include the equipment and the installation all under contract. And the expected cost for this is around three-hundred thousand dollars for the cooling towers. If there are monies still left after these projects have been funded and completed, we would like to purchase and install electric, electronic air cleaners that can be attached to air handling units. Our staff can do this work. This would just be a purchase of the equipment and then our folks could do the work attaching the electronic air cleaners to the air handling units. And this would be somewhere between a hundred-and-eighty thousand and two-hundred thousand dollars. Looking at four-hundred to four-hundred-and-twenty-five classrooms, I believe is correct. I'll have, I'd have to check that number. Our plan is to order between four-hundred and four-hundred-and-twenty-five based on funding. If we still have funds to expand, and we may not at this point, but if we do, um, there are some heat pumps in the district that it would be great if we could replace. They're still working, but they're getting older. So that would be the last use of the facility side of ESER funds, if we still have funds remaining at that point. Have any questions regarding any of those projects or...
I just have one question, uh, on the second project, the HVAC system. You said air conditioning in the gym. That, that's only at McDowell High.
Yes, ma'am. That would be the, the high school gym?
Cause I know our two middle schools have also requested us to look at the fact that they don't have air conditioning either. So I didn't know if, if out of all of this, if that's something that has been discussed.
That was not part of the plan that was submitted and approved? That could be looked at, but it would, it would require a change in the plan, correct? You didn't, yeah, okay. So it, it's possible that, that, that could be looked at.
Okay.
I don't know that we would have the funding to do all three, but if we, if we looked at it and we, we could, that's, anything is possible.
I know that was something that was turned in with facility needs.
It is. But I don't, there are a lot, all of these issues that we've listed are huge issues, so... But that is certainly something we could look at.
Is, is there an expected timeline to begin on some of these issues?
Uh, a- absolutely. Um, we'll be submitting orders for the cooling towers um, in the very near future. And then that would also include, um, going out to bid for contractors to install. The two bigger projects that are going through the architecture firm for the electrical engineer, and let me explain, in the past, we were able to use engineers from DPI. for projects that, that utilize federal funds. Well, because there are so many districts in the state that are doing the same kinds of things with ESER funds, DPI said that they, their, their state engineers are not allowed to work on those projects. They have to focus on DPI-funded projects. So that, that created some confusion and some extra work that for everyone in the state, when we found out that the state engineers cannot be utilized as they have been in the past. But those projects, again, they're hoping for those to go out to bid in November. And then as soon as, as soon as we have a, uh, an appropriate bid that's approved, then we can move forward.
Okay, so that means we'd have basically a year to have it all done and paid for.
Yes, sir. Well, you have to have everything obligated by June thirtieth. And it has to be actually spent and in place by September thirtieth, correct?
Okay. We, we better.
So we got, we've got a year and two weeks, right, or a year and nineteen days right now.
Well, we better hurry.
Mr. Oliver, if I could, I'd like to mention too, um, one thing I don't want to forget about, cause we don't want to sink money into Marion Elementary if we're planning on doing something down the road. Uh, but we can't forget about the problems that they've had over there, you know, with mold mill do in the past and, and things like that. So maybe checking into a dehumidifier for each room or something, uh, just to, to make sure, because I think everyone's aware that like the Raleigh Durham area didn't start school for three or four weeks, they were late because of the same type problem. Uh, so we want to make sure that we don't forget about those teachers and kids over there.
Yes, sir. Uh, we could certainly look at that as, um, one of the add-ons if we have any funds left to expand. Such as, as we were talking about the, the heat pumps that could be candidates for replacement. We could look at some dehumidifiers for places like Marion Elementary. We may have a couple of classrooms in other places that need the same kind of improvement. Yes, sir.
Any, anyone else?
Just roughly, I guess we'll get an update on how it's going and, and how much everything is being spent November, Decemberish?
Yes, ma'am. Well, um, Dr. Grit has scheduled meetings beginning next week for every two weeks. So we'll be meeting to go over where we are, what's in the works, what's left. So we'll be looking at it every two weeks from here till, till it's all done.
Got it, thanks.
Uh, sir, did I cover that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
And at this time, you need no action from the board?
No, sir. Once the board approves the plan that is submitted to the state, that's the board's action, uh, in the, in the use of the ESER funds. It's, it's a different process than when it's local funding or state funds. Yes, sir.
A- anyone else have any questions for, uh, Ms. Hamby or Mr. Oliver?
Did I say that right, Ms. Rampe, that last part about the, the approvals? So we'll make sure she's the, she's the lady with all that expertise. Ms. Hamby, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. Um, sir, I would, I do have, Dr. Grit asked me to give you an update on some just regular maintenance and facilities issues, so I can do that now as well. That's okay. So, Mr. Hutton, if you don't mind, if you could pull up that first photo. We'll start with our tennis court project, which is ongoing, um, moving along very nicely. Uh, the dry weather, it's been really hot and difficult for some folks, but for the construction folks, all this dry weather has been a godsend. So, uh, from that point of view, we're, we're thankful for the dry weather, not so much the hot, hot weather. Uh, most recently, lots of concrete has been added to the court area. If you look, uh, Derek, move forward one. Go to the next one, I'm sorry. There you go. So if you look to the right there at that center line of concrete, that's the sidewalk that will go down between the two sets of courts. There will be three courts on each side of that center sidewalk. That twelve foot space there at the end on the right, that's for the paver, the paving equipment to go to the rear part of the courts. Once the rear courts are paved, um, they'll pour that and then they'll pour, then they'll pave the forward courts, um, after that concrete has been poured. So I hope that makes sense. That's why that gap is there. That's also why the, the sidewalks closest to the building have not yet been poured. They'll be last. Once the, once all the paving has been completed, those sidewalks closest to the building will be poured. And so if you look at the building, all the brick work on two of the walls is totally complete. So this, the wall you can look at and the one facing the road, those two walls are totally complete with brick. They may have laid some more brick today, but I'm not sure. Uh, but they have, they have moved quickly on the masonry of the building. Um, and the building is coming along very nicely. All right. We'll move forward. I don't have photos for any of the other issues. That's, there's a better look at the building. Thank you, Derek. Also, thank you for filling in tonight for Mr. Berryhill. So we appreciate it. Derek is our network engineer, but like all of our technology folks, he is, uh, multi-talented and multitask every day. So that's what they all do. So as was mentioned earlier, uh, we've been looking at athletics items at East and West Middle as well as the high school. So we have estimates coming back in for flooring, plumbing, and light fixtures in, in some of the changing room areas, some drop ceilings. Um, and these are, these are in the work, we are moving forward on, on these issues. Let you know that. Moving on down to fencing projects, we have completed almost all of our fencing projects that were scheduled, um, for this summer. We do have, uh, we have received quotes now for the fence at McDowell High School that will create a barrier for our new multipurpose field away from the parking lots, so that we don't have any good old boys in their pickup trucks decide to try out the traction of the multipurpose field and the, and the turf. So, or anyone else in a pickup truck, not, it could be a good old girl, who knows? In a pickup truck, or it could be someone on a, on a motorcycle. But, uh, we'll have a, a safety fence in place there that will, uh, include a drive-through gate for JROTC to still be able to park their bus right there and also for folks to get in and out for maintenance and such. There will also be a walkthrough for students and staff that will, it won't have a gate, it'll just be a simple pedestrian walkthrough. It'll go straight to the building. So you'll see that in the near future. We also have a property line fence that will be going in and, uh, at the back of East Middle, down there in the neighborhood, where we've had issues over the years with folks walking into the campus at night, and Ms. Baseney knows all about that. And I know lots of folks that live in that neighborhood are aware of the foot traffic that goes through those properties and into the East Middle property and, and back and forth. So, um, that fence will be happening shortly as well. Our summer paint crew is totally finished now, but our full-time paint crew, they just finished up at West Middle, finishing the projects that were not completed by the summer crew, and they are now on site at MHS. And part of what they'll be doing there will be the painting that's needed in the locker room areas, uh, at the high school. And I think today they started on some external doors at the back. Is that right, Ms. Bennett? Did they do anything else today or just those doors? Okay, good. I know that was your first priority, right? Good. And then AC for buildings and freezer cooler issues, as you know, that's been an issue. Uh, what we have left right now for a, uh, big-ticket AC outage is the main office unit at West Middle. Uh, we're still pending parts for that from Train in Atlanta. They have, we have a unit identified, but they're still looking for a coil that is needed to marry that unit up to our system, so. That is the biggest AC issue that we're still facing, and then we still have one freezer, um, that is under repair. We had many several days ago, so we're down to one. We're thankful for that. That's all I have for you at this time, Mr. Chairman, unless there are any other questions, Dr. Grit, regarding regular maintenance and facilities issues.
Anyone?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move along then to new business item twelve and, uh, have a presentation for Ms. Hamby about what we know about the new legislation, Parents' Bill of Rights, Senate Bill forty-nine.
Thank you. You're not going to be able to get rid of me tonight, too. So once again, it is my pleasure to stand before you tonight to share with you about Parents' Bill of Rights and that Senate Bill forty-nine. You know the saying, it takes a village, and as that saying goes, it takes a village working together to raise a child. Senate Bill forty-nine has been enacted to list the rights of parents to direct the upbringing of their child, their education, healthcare, and mental health. What an opportunity. The opportunity to engage with families and their child's education has been and continues to be a commitment of McDowell County Schools. The Parents' Bill of Rights supports the ongoing partnership by fostering an expectation of communication between school and home, allowing parents to have a say in their child's education. Parents and family involvement is key in education. Ten out of twelve, hmm. Dr. Grit mentioned this earlier. In consultation with our state educational partners and our school board attorney, McDowell County Schools District staff has been actively working to ensure that we comply with the law. Upon our review, we discovered that we're currently doing ten out of the twelve expectations outlined in Senate Bill forty-nine. We were ten of ten, but they added a little more, and so that put us at eighty-three percent compliance on a pass fail system we hear are passing. As I said, we're on target. We're on target with the following, the ten out of ten. Ensuring there is no instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality in kindergarten through fourth grade. It also goes without saying that parents have the right to consent or withhold consent for participation in reproductive health and safety education programs from students grade five and up. They have the right to seek medical or religious exemptions from immunization requirements. The right to review standardized, statewide standardized assessments results as part of the state report card. This information is posted annually on our district and school websites. The right to request an evaluation of their child for academically or intellectually gifted programs or, or identification, uh, as a child that might have a disability. The right to inspect and review public school textbooks and instructional materials. The right to access information about board policies for promotion, retention, and high school graduation requirements. The right to receive student report cards on a regular basis. Student progress reports and report cards go home four times each year, each quarter. The right to access information relating to state public education systems, state standards, report card requirements, textbook requirement. All of this information can be accessed online. Parents have the right to participate in parent teacher organizations. And the right to review all available records, oh, the right to review all available records of materials of, uh, that their child has borrowed from the school library. That system for us is called our fallout system. As a district, along with the support of the Board of Education, we're working towards the final two areas. Number one, is parent, is schools must seek parental consent for students to participate in survey that collects protected student information, and that's key, protected student information, along with notifying parents prior to change in any name used for the student in school. So we're waiting on a few things. We're waiting on additional guidance from the North Carolina School Board Association and legal counsel as they seek clarification and implement a timeline for compliance during the first semester of this school year. We will also submit an annual plan each year in May to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction on behalf of the McDowell County Schools. So our final takeaways is partnership between school and home are crucial to student success. We have and we will continue to partner with parents. We will comply with this law. We'll seek guidance and make changes as new information becomes available. It's teamwork for everyone. Are there any questions?
I've got several. But I wanted to go last. Anybody?
Out of the two, uh, one finally, one of the two that we got as well.
So really the two that she would just mentioned there at the end, yeah, those are the two, and those are the new pieces of the legislation. Uh, you know, really, we were ten of ten, uh, before the legislation came out. And it's important to notice, uh, too, uh, that, that many of these components, they're build this plane as you fly. Uh, this, this, uh, state law, uh, coming into effect just a few weeks ago, uh, we were already in school. So, I mean, there's been several things where we've had to, uh, back up and address. Number one, most importantly, how do we, how do we implement this and remain free from, uh, the classroom as best we can? Uh, keeping, keeping the adult issues, if you will, um, away from our students. And I, and I've got to commend our principals and, and the job that they've done, particularly, um, on, on, uh, doing the attendance and the roles and making sure we've got the names correct. So, um, the, there's several other pieces that we're still waiting on. Um, and we'll receive more information from DPI as well as School Boards Association and our legal representation as well. Uh, the survey being one of those, healthcare piece being another piece of those, as well as the reporting piece. Uh, there's a new, there is a new reporting piece, um, but really for us, it's hard to report on something to DPI when DPI's not even had an opportunity to lay out what we should be reporting on. So we're waiting to get, uh, the information from those folks, and then we'll certainly report on what we're doing in our district.
So the survey, do you expand on what the survey actually cared to do?
Basically what they're doing, it's, it's not that we're giving out so- a survey as much as it is we're asking parents to opt in to, to a survey. And in years past, that might have been an opt-out. So, uh, we would have given the survey, um, and then if a parent, if a parent didn't want their child to do a survey, they would have, at the beginning of the year, just signed a form. Now we're, now we're asking for an opt-in, uh, we would send those informations home ahead of time. And that's not just a survey, Mr. Suddles, I think it's important to note, that's also healthcare, uh, type things. But you have to remember, our nurses have been doing opt-ins for a long time. If you were giving medication to a student or anything like that, it would have required parent involvement long ago. So again, this is not something new, um, by, by any stretch of the imagination. There are new provisions within, within what we're going to be doing. So great questions. Thank you.
Commend you for reading policy twice. It, I don't know if that's state required or if you guys do that locally, but it's really nice because what it does obviously is allow you to read something and then kind of digest it. And you send out a hundred and sixty pages, which I understand, I didn't get through everything. I'll just confess to the, to the public, there's a lot of reading with this, but, um, so anyways, two, two questions, um, and Ms. Hamby mentioned, uh, one of them. The, the update adds a provision prohibiting instruction on gender identity, sexual activity, or sexuality in kindergarten through fourth grade. Okay, so I almost want to read that again. I probably read that sentence five or six times today, thinking about it. Um, the obvious question to me is what about grades four through twelve?
So really what happens in fifth grade is we, we introduce puberty, uh, classes within the, uh, and that's been in the curriculum for a long time. So, really, what happens in fifth grade is we introduce puberty classes within the, and that's been in the curriculum for a long time. That's part of the North Carolina State Curriculum. So, that's where that cutoff came, really. And to be honest with you, it was an obvious, it was an obvious break for the state. That's really what that had to do with.
Can the school board strengthen what the state is recommending, like a county can? Notice, could we, I'm not suggesting, I'm asking, can we say we don't want that type of curriculum from K through seven? Or is that state mandated?
I think, you know, you've got, you're gonna have some state mandated issues within there, and that's certainly something we would need to seek legal counsel on from Chris Campbell's office to see about that.
Okay.
I mean, anytime we were gonna go in opposition of what the requirements would be, we would definitely need to make sure we were in compliance with the School Boards Association rules and Mr. Campbell as well.
For the fun of it, could you find that out?
Sure.
But parents can still opt out of that, correct?
Oh, that's correct. I mean, they can opt out of anything.
I remember I had to sign consent to let them.
But our curriculum and what we're gonna teach would be present at that point. And I think it's important, you know, the lessons that are taught in fifth grade from an elementary perspective and having lived as an elementary principal, those are important lessons that we teach there.
I mean, what the Senate says is that the curriculum will not include those materials, which tells me that the curriculum can include materials after grade four. Right? Okay, that's my second item. I'm not as, well, I have. I've mentioned this a couple of times. Just, I'll mention it again. You might ask, should the parental bill of rights extend to the school board as well as to the teachers and the staff? And I do think that the way we do some things confuses parents and the public and would suggest that we tape the workshop like we do the, this meeting for the public to view. And I think that would create, people that follow this board are confused about why we tape some meetings and why we don't tape others. So, I'd suggest that as a thought. Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. So, in order to comply with new state laws, Senate Bill forty-nine, the Parents' Bill of Rights, we do have to amend some of our policies. Ms. Pupoe is our policy chairperson. I understand you folks have been talking back and forth. But you got volunteered to present.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. English, Ms. Muma, Dr. Gritt, members of the board. So, along with what Ms. Hamby just presented on Senate Bill forty-nine, we do have to make proper revisions within policies. So, there are seven policies that will be revised. And so, what I have done for you in your packet is that there is a Reader's Digest version of this. And so, I'd just like to walk you through that for just a moment. Now, the full policies are behind that with the revisions made, so you can see what it was and what they will be changed to. And so, there are seven policies. You can see at the top on the left side, it is the policies and their numbers. In the middle, it is the specific name of the policy. And then generally, if it is just our regular policy updates that we do each year, then we put, we'll list on there if those are required changes, if they're strongly recommended or recommended. All of these policies are required. And then at the end of that line, it also listens the explanation. And so, the explanation for all of these policies are Senate Bill forty-nine. So, what I've done for you is just, under each policy, listed the changes that would be made in each of those policies. So, there are seven policies, Parental Involvement, thirty-two-ten parental inspection and objection to instructional materials, thirty-five-forty comprehensive health education program, forty-three-thirty-five criminal behavior, forty-seven-twenty surveys of students, sixty-one-twenty student health services, and seventy-three-hundred staff responsibilities. So, I wanted to give you, this is just, again, just a Reader's Digest version for you to be able to refer to. We also included in your packet, of course, those policies and the changes that are being required to make with the Parents' Bill of Rights.
And if I can, I'll add that the School Boards Association put these policies out. They have been working on them over the summer with anticipation that this Senate Bill would be enacted, and of course, it was. As well as Campbell and Chatley, our legal counsel, had given their stamp of approval on the policies as well. So, what you have before you tonight is really their version of that. I will let you know that part of, one of these policies is for the district to put together some programs that are available. Just to be completely honest with you, we've not had time to get all that together. So, we've asked here for you guys to do just a first read of these policies, recognizing that those programs that are supposed to be in there, we're gonna get those out as quickly as we can. So, you will have those available for the second reading of it. That's one of those that you could choose to approve them in the September meeting, or you could choose, if you didn't have time to review those, to push that out a little further. I will tell you that those will be periodically changing as the programs that will ebb and flow as we go throughout the school.
Yes, sir. And that is in that first policy, proceeding the parental involvement policy. And it's a list of parent service learning projects that can be done within the school. And that's just really, would be a list of different opportunities for parents to be involved in the school. So, those things are gonna kind of ebb and flow as programs change. And so, we are working on comprising that for that to go into the next time that we review these policies.
I'll certainly have that out to you in your board packets ahead of time, so you'll be able to review that before we would ask for approval on that.
I do have a quick question. Do these, I mean, it's law at this point in time, but we're in this, we're in this space of we've not approved it as policy yet, but it's law that we have to do this. How does that work in particular? So, I'm looking at the student healthcare services, and one of the things about the policy that has to change is, again, it's more of an opt-in, right? So, if a child needs emergency services, according to the law right this moment, a parent would have to give permission for that before any emergency services could be administered to a child. But we've not, we've not put that into place yet, and we also don't have, you know, I would assume that once, before we get that into place, that we've got, you know, it's going out to the parent saying, "Look, if your kid needs, please opt in for this. Here, you can opt out, but let's do this so that way, if something happens to your kid and there's a fall and there's a windpipe issue, you know, that we don't, we can do what we need to do immediately." So, how does that, we're kind of in this gray area where we don't want to put any of our staff at risk. We also don't want to put any of our kids at risk. And so, how does that work right this moment, kind of this place between it's law, but we've not approved it as policy?
Sure, I think that's a great question and a fair question, but just to be completely honest with you, we're gonna care for our kids. First and foremost, if we have a kid who has an accident, we're certainly going to treat the student and work on the backside of that, if there's anything that comes out of it. I'll be completely honest with you, we have a situation with a student who has a catastrophic type of injury on the playground. We're doing CPR on them, you know, even though we may not have legal permission to do that. I would never ask our teachers to shy away from caring for a child. I think, you know, more importantly, when you get into, let's just say it's just a scrape, just a scrape on the playground, and as we're working through this, it's been common practice for our nurses to communicate with parents before, you know, doing treatment, or it may even be, and when we say treatment, we're talking about cleaning up a bloody knee. So, I think we've got to have a common sense approach to this and recognize that we're working on this as the law. Like you said, the law's already out, and we're working through these things. I think these are some of the provisions that are also being worked on through the School Boards Association, similar to the training that we went to the other day, where they're still working some of the kinks out. I certainly don't think that our General Assembly legislators in this situation intended for us to not be able to treat a kid in that kind of situation. But sometimes when laws get passed quickly, those are some of the things that they've got to work on in the meantime. So, that's something that we're gonna, you know, continue to do what's best for kids, take a common sense approach, and then we're gonna continue to work through this, to be compliant with the law as well.
Great.
Thank you.
And so, we just really want our staff to hear us say that if at any point in time there's a child that is in critical
No questions.
We will, we will support the decision for life-saving, you know, kind of thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have.
Really?
Yes, unless you'd like for me to clog, Mr. English. He told me last time he wanted me to come up with a clogging team for the floor in here, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, you better be careful. This floor, these chairs will get out from here very quickly.
Okay, well, on a more serious note, the policies have been presented to the board for a first reading. That means that we have time to read, digest, reflect, ask questions. And if you have questions, please direct them to Ms. Dowdell or Ms. Hamby or Dr. Gritt. If they don't know the answer, I'm sure they can point you towards someone who does. And I guess, I know at our training session the other day, they talked like we really needed to get a move on about approving these new policies. But I just wonder if this could be an item we could include on our October regular, maybe, instead of trying to accomplish that at the September work session in a couple of weeks.
I think so.
Would that be? And that, I mean, who knows, by then, there may be some other policies that needs, someone has discovered needs revising. Okay, all right. So, you have plenty of assigned reading to do for the next thirty days, and we will consider these for approval at the October meeting. Okay, next item under new business is to select the delegates and an alternate to the North Carolina School Boards Conference in November. We need four delegates and one alternate. So, are there any volunteers to be a delegate? Who else is going to the conference this year? Might be a better question. One, two, you going, Terry?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, one, two, Michelle's going, three, you going, Donnie, you going, Jeff, you going? Okay, that's four.
Sure, four.
Okay, so, let's see. Ms. Hams, well, I have to be there anyway, so I guess I could serve as alternate if Mr. Frank. Well, we need Terry there, but we'll make him alternate. How about that? Ms. Hams, Mr. Schuford, Mr. Abernathy, what about you, Ms. Muma? Are you going?
I'm going, but I might have other thing that comes up, so that's why I'm being.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going as of now. Yep.
P O H, okay. Would you four consider serving as a voting delegate from McDowell County? All right, is there one who would consider serving as an alternate? Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Frank has volunteered to serve as the alternate. So, is there a motion to approve Ms. Hams, Mr. Schuford, Mr. Abernathy, and Ms. Pupoe as the voting delegates and Mr. Frank as the alternate to represent and vote on behalf of the McDowell County Board of Education at the twenty-twenty-three North Carolina School Boards Association Conference in November?
So moved.
Ms. Muma makes the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Uh, thank you, sir. Mr. Settles makes the second. All right, all in favor of the motion, and it carries unanimously. Thank you all. That item of business is dispatched.
Do we receive the delegate questions in advance? And when we vote, or we're voting, I assume on the board's behalf, not our own?
Yes.
So, do you review those?
Well.
You'll get that in your general.
We haven't. It usually comes in a, when your name is a delegate is submitted, you usually get like a little information packet along with your registration and things.
And you can talk about it next week.
Very similar to.
Yep.
Okay, so, next is, Mr. Abernathy was interested and asked that we have Dr. Gritt look into and update the board on the West Marion Water Project. Dr. Gritt, what was yours?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, a little bit of history here. We did on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, Mr. Oliver, on behalf of the board, shared a letter with the county. And in that letter, and I shared that in your board packet, it was basically stating that we were willing to look at this grant application for a water project. And I've since then asked Mr. Wooton, our county manager, if he could share back some information with me. And then I've put this in your packet as well, but just so the folks out there know what's going on, I'm just going to read the update here from Mr. Wooton to kind of give you guys the understanding of what's going on. And it says, "Dear Dr. Gritt, approximately thirty years ago, McDowell County, McDowell County Schools, as well as the City of Marion, partnered to construct a water line to serve Nebo Elementary. That line, which came to serve as the backbone of McDowell County's Nebo Water System, has served the school well in the intervening years. A similar partnership is being proposed to extend water to West Marion Elementary. There have been discussions over the last several years between the officials from McDowell County and the McDowell County Schools about shared desire to see the extension of public water to West Marion Elementary. McDowell County has begun an evaluation of the steps that would be necessary to extend service to the school. The first step was to secure the source of the water. To that end, McDowell County has received permission from the City of Marion to extend a water line from the end of the city's current line at the Pilot Truck Stop towards the school. Once the source was guaranteed, McDowell County has sought estimates for the cost of extending water towards the school. Engineers have noted that bids for public projects are fluctuating greatly lately based on materials and labor costs. A preliminary cost estimate based on recent bidding would be approximately one point seven million, including construction and engineering. McDowell County has applied for an Appalachian Regional Commission grant to extend a water line from Pilot, from the Pilot there to Zion Hill Road intersection. The project limits were limited since the grant was primarily focused on serving businesses. There's been favorable response to this grant submission, and it appears a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant could be forthcoming, and that is actually what our letter was in reference to. In addition to the Appalachian Regional Commission grant, the commissioners have requested funding from the General Assembly for the project. There's been no word on whether this request will be made, and I'm assuming that that would be in the state budget if it works. A proposal would be to cost share fifty-fifty on the non-grant portion of the cost, as was done. A proposal would be to cost share fifty fifty on the non-grant portion of the cost as was done with the Nebo Project. The cost share on the Nebo Project has helped get that project accomplished and could be very much be a factor for success with the W- West Marion Elementary Line. Please let me know if you have any questions about this proposal, we look forward to working with you and the Board of Education on this exciting project, sincerely, Mr. Wooton.
It's really a big deal. And, and for the school board, you know, it, it may be that it, it goes by people, maybe it doesn't. Maybe everybody kind of realizes what, what this might mean. When, when this was done in the nineties, there's a man, and I don't remember people's names, but there was a man named Mr. D A Grayson that donated ten thousand dollars of his personal money for that water line to be extended to Nebo Elementary. And that's the backbone for the entire county system. There's a, there's a master meter at around Stacy, Stacy Hill Road where the county buys the water past that point and then owns the system past that. And so as I understand it, it would be a similar situation here, there would be a point where the county would take, would take the ownership of it. And it's a, it's, it's very important and I appreciate you doing, doing enough that I hope we'll support it.
I just have a quick question, so if we were to split this fifty fifty, right, this cost, this possible cost after they get the five hundred thousand, we're still looking at, it's one point seven minus five hundred thousand, correct? And if we support that, what does that money come out of, capital? Yep, okay, thank you.
But they're still going to pursue other, they are.
According to the letter, uh there's a possibility that there's some uh monies that was being talked about in the legislature.
Right.
And I'd negotiate harder than that.
I'm just asking.
I wouldn't give them fifty percent.
That's what the letter said, that's why I was just asking, I was just asking and just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that we're all aware where that money comes out of, that that comes out of capital and not other.
Correct.
Pots of money, right.
I'm interested to know who else was, would have access to that water pipeline, I mean, if we do, we're talking about, it says for five, well, from Pilot to Zion Hill Road Intersection, that's five businesses. So who else has access, is that the communities around there?
The whole community.
The whole community.
And you.
Along Zion Hill Road, okay, so then the county then also stands to generate uh income from these families as well.
Correct.
Long, longer term in order, like, the county's going to generate income by us providing that service. I, I think I might agree with you, Mr. Abernathy, that negotiating that fifty percent is uh, is appropriate considering they're asking us to pay half of an elementary school that's gonna, that, that whole county's gonna end up making a whole lot of money from unless there's some sort of, you know, I mean, I hate to say it, unless there's some kind of kickback to the school system based on, on that.
Some kickback.
Well, this, this is uh, of course, all of this is still in the talking stages right now. We're in that gray part where we've begun the journey, but we can't even see the end of it yet. So uh there's still a, a lot of talking to do, but I, I think what Mr. Abernathy uh imparted to me was that he, he just didn't want the board and the public that pays attention to the board to uh forget how, what an impact a project like this does have. And uh Mr. Frank, uh you may recall, but seems I recall one or two of the commissioners talking kind of like they wanted West Marion Elementary School to kind of be determinous and the bargaining chip, I guess you'd say, when they're trying to pitch this project to different grandto- grandtores.
It is, and uh Mr. Abernathy, I know you're aware of this as well, but uh there is a lot of favoritism uh toward the monies that, that could come for this in the state legislative calls of the magnitude it will have. Uh thi- this is a, this is a very good thing.
It is.
And, and we have support for those additional things, but, and I know you're aware of that.
We'll, we'll have further updates as uh new information comes along, but uh I think as far as the board and the general public needs to know is that this is one of those things that starts off really slow until something happens and then it goes pretty quick after that. Alright, okay, so next item is board reports. The board did travel to Asheville last Thursday to the North Carolina School Boards Association for all training. And it's called LEED, which stands for Leadership Education and Development for local boards. And uh we, uh of course, we're recognized for this board's commitment to, to uh continuing their ongoing training. One of the other things that uh was presented there was an idea of a board self-evaluation. And I, I, that's been through my mind a time or two since last Thursday. And I kind of feel like it might be beneficial to the board, I'm, I'm not sure. I would like to gauge the board's interest in uh, in taking this on and others would like to give their opinion on it, anyone? I, I really think it could be beneficial, uh we do so many real good things as a board. And yet at the same time, uh we're human beings and we have uh opportunities for miscommunication or maybe we just misunderstand, you know, uh what the, the public and our students and staff are asking of us. So it might be a good opportunity, I think, for us to, to give an honest opinion of ourselves to ourselves. And perhaps that, that might lead to a, a better board, so I'm up for it and other folks are. I see some heads shaking, but I don't see any lips moving.
There you go, I'm in support.
Okay, alright, well, this isn't a vote, I'm just, just asking, is this something the board would like to?
Sure.
Take on?
Let's do it.
Okay, alright, well, uh Ms. Smith, could you make a reminder to contact School Boards Association? See about getting the documents that, that we'll need? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh board reports, let's see, we have uh Head Start.
Okay, I hope you had an opportunity to read what I sent to you on Google Drive today. Um got that information out at, I think our meeting was at ten and um just wanted to share a little bit about what Head Start does and um the disaggregation of all of that information. Um I think is amazing when you talk about a program that looks at itself and is always trying to improve itself. And that's what Head Start's constantly doing. Um on page thirty of the attachment that I sent to you, just one thing that, that we all celebrated, I know Ms. Hamby was on there. Um when Dr. Dulany shared this, um it breaks it down just into different, different uh components of their program. But this to me is one of the biggest reasons, and, and I know Ms. Hamby shared this and I did as well. Says the number of students um who are up to date on a schedule of age-appropriate preventative and primary healthcare according to relevant state EPS DT schedule for child well-care. Uh when they, they came in at the time of enrollment, only four of those children were up to date. At the end of enrollment, eighty-three of those children were up to date with where they needed to be. Uh contrary to what a lot of people seem to think about public schools now, our number one commitment to children and to families is to making sure that they're safe, making sure that their well-being is taken care of and putting outstanding educators in classrooms. And that is what all of McDowell County Schools does every day. Um but I definitely wanted to commend the uh early Head Start and Head Start Program for this. I think that this is a, a program, and I know we've got several principals here. Please know that I appreciate y'all's commitment to be at work all day and then come to these meetings tonight. Um I know you know your kids better than anybody else does and you're constantly looking at families and how can we serve them best? And again, I, I don't think any of us would be in public education if we didn't want to serve families. And, and, and that's, that's the point that I want to make sure everybody understands. Is we're not trying to do things against families, we're trying to work with them. Um thi- and if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I do hope that you will, it's quite a few pages. But when you look at all of the things that Head Start is doing, another thing that I looked at, um Ms. Hamby was when we talked about the parents that didn't even have a high school diploma. But they're making sure that their kids have the best start that they need so that they can be successful. Because once again, that should be our ultimate goal for every kid that comes through our doors, this is successful education. So um get a little passionate about stuff like that because I, I think that we don't celebrate the good that we're doing. And I definitely think as a school board, we need to be making sure that our staff knows that we are so proud of everything that they do all day, every day. Oh, and they do have a job opportunity, uh they have a couple, um some part-time availabilities at Nebo, Eastfield and Early Head Start. Uh Early Head Start is also looking for a custodian. And also at the split North Carolina pre-K Head Start at Marion Elementary, we're looking for a certified teacher. That is someone that does have a BK degree. Um but if we have somebody that you know of availability, somebody that's listening, um that does have a K-six or a bachelor's degree in early childhood and would be willing to go back and take classes. Uh Dr. Dulany would love to be able to talk to you about filling that position.
I just wanted to say, I, I did have a chance to read through this, um it is incredible the amount of, uh I just was very overwhelmed for our staff, I was overwhelmed. Dr. Dulany, for, wait, where'd she, she, she's not, sorry, okay. Um yes, I just overwhelmed by the amount of data required uh by our, our s- school um to track. And, and then excited about the amount of data that we are tracking, um it's, it's really, it's really quite, it's, it's really quite a lot. Um but it's really good information, it's really good information for us to have. Um because I, I would agree that there's so much work that's going in and it's such good work that's happening and providing opportunities. I was one of those parents who, it, you know, forgive me for saying this, but I was like, I don't, I don't need to send my kids to preschool. I don't need that, you know, kind of thing. And then afterwards, seeing what the kids were doing in preschool and going, huh, maybe I should have sent my kids to preschool, you know? Um and, you know, I, I think I did okay setting them up, but recognizing the tremendous amount of resources that our, our system does have for the preschoolers and all the different things that they're doing, it really is quite incredible. And so to see this data though, gosh, this was really incre- this was, this was huge, this was really impressive, so. Um so shout out to Dr. Dulany and their team, of course, as well, and Ms. Hamby for all the good work of recording all of this, so, thanks.
Alright, any, uh anything else from Head Start? Mr. Frank, uh NJROTC, big A's on?
Thank you, uh Mr. English. I, I want to say this on behalf of the pre-K program. Uh I got a three-year-old granddaughter that started Tuesday and uh I've never seen a kid so excited in her life. Uh and the services that the schools provide for, speech and that sort of thing at that early age, that intervention is astronomical. Can't put a price tag on it. But I, I love that every day she says, yay, school! She's, you know, gets out of bed at six o'clock, she's ready to go. But the downside of it, she's sick as a dog right, right now, because those immune systems have got to get used to the other kids. But it's all part of growing up and part of living. But I'm, I've got a NJROTC update and Ms. Bennett, I, I want to say this, um from a parent whose child was involved with NJROTC and uh on a national winning team in drill competitions, I am proud of McDowell High School, it is uh one of the shining stars of that school. And I know we got the great information from Mcgall early college and we've also got great information from uh MAI and also Virtual Academy. But uh they're all shining stars, but each school has shining stars within the school. And I am personally very proud of a, a parent that has had two graduates at McDowell High School and they've both been very successful. Uh we're doing something right and, and I'm, my hat's off to you. And uh just want to say that uh Captain Ross said that the NJROTC is off to a good start thus far. Uh glad to see Chief Campbell come in, there's NCOIC, which is a non-commissioned officer in charge. And uh this is really an accomplishment, but the NJROTC enrollment is strong and they have ninety-five ninety-five cadets in, in the unit first semester, that, that's great, that is great. Uh our military's safe, uh Mr. Oliver, they uh recruiting's a problem now, but it looks like we're doing our part at an early age. Uh and uh that, there's got seventy for next semester and twenty of them are, are eighth graders, which is, which is phenomenal too. And this past weekend, they had two events, uh orienteering and man, I tell you, I'm glad we still got people that can read a compass. And uh they uh, they had a successful competition and Micah Hensley finished in first place, which was very good. And uh the main competitions uh start on the twentieth of September and they have their marksmanship match and it usually lasts three days. And of course, we all went to that, Ms. Muma and I think Ms. Pupo, you went with us, didn't you, over there to the high school for that? But they've got that coming up, starting the twentieth, the three days, I think. But uh I, I'm, I'm telling you, Ms. Bennett, my hat's off to you and I am so proud of that high school, uh everything they do. I'm, I, we uh, we don't have a thing to be ashamed of, thank you very much.
Mr. Frank, did you say on September twentieth is?
September twentieth.
Okay, great.
Other, have you anything to report?
I have one for uh buildings and grounds, just to let you guys know that uh tomorrow, the installation for the EC Playground is underway. Uh so the equipment's been there for, I think, two weeks, we can have something like that. So tomorrow, they're going to start erecting that and uh it will finally be a, a special place, you know, from what it can be, so. Measurements were a little bit messed up, but uh we're going by, you know, standards and what needs to be done and uh they figured it out, so it'll be erected tomorrow.
Good, good. Okay, are there other board members that need to report? If not, then we'll move along to item thirteen, approval of the consent agenda. You see those items listed there and as always, if uh board member so desires, an item can be removed from that list and discussed and acted upon separately. So are there any that need to be uh considered separate from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Something.
Ms. Silver's second, Ms. Muma, okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor? Then the motion carries. Alright, so at this time, item fourteen, uh the board would entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot one-one for the following purposes. For the, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential student information and to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information. So is there a motion to move into closed session for those reasons?
So move.
Ms. Muma makes a motion, Ms. Hams makes the second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? And the motion carries. And we will move into closed session? For those? And those items, though?